I will, I will.
I'm Steve from Florida Window and Door. Here to tell you why you should use us. Probably one of the larger window and door companies.
Can you give us your name and company again? We couldn't hear you.
He said Steve.
Steve from Florida Window and Door.
Last name?
Drucker.
Drucker, okay.
I don't think that's on Steve.
Okay, just gotta hold it right up to you now. You hear me?
Yes.
Oh, that's much better. I can even hear me now. So, we're one of the larger companies down here. The most important thing about buying windows and doors is the company you buy from. Because you can have a great window, and if it's not put in right, it's a disaster. Now, we brought ourselves and everybody that comes into your house works for the company. No subcontractors, and we use finest materials. And that's, that's pretty important. The other thing is having access to you guys. You know, we'll come and do measured twenty at a time. The thing that fouls up with all of these projects is when you have five out of the twenty not able to be there. You know, we also need access to have a dumpster and a place to park our trucks. So that we have, you know, so we can get full access to your house when we're installing. Pricewise, we're competitive with everybody. I just think that the company is so well organized, that's why you should use us. Quickly, does anybody have any questions on this?
How old is your company?
I'm sorry?
How old is this?
Twenty-seven years in business.
And you have station data where you're from?
We're in, uh, we just moved to Lake Worth Monday, yesterday. So, we're pretty local. Manufacturing is local. The windows, most of the windows that we use are from CGI. They would just, they just merge with PGT.
That's CGI, that's the kind of, that's CGI also. I believe he said that was CGI. He said they're manufactured CGI also.
Okay, okay. No, it's a pretty popular brand. It's a, the way I compare it to PGT, PGT would be the Toyota, CGI would be the Lexus.
Chili con carne for people.
Right.
They don't know what your window is. Show a window. Show something. Sample.
There it is.
It's the same.
It's the same window, John.
The same window, same company.
Is the same price the same?
The same manufacturer.
I see.
So how is your price more competitive from Latitude Windows?
I'm sorry?
How is your pricing more competitive than Latitude Windows?
What's your price?
He just put it in writing.
Sorry?
I'm sorry?
We put it in writing that we're less than. What is it? What's the price?
Where's the prices? We have no price list.
In other words, if you did three windows in a house, the two, one window is double, one window is double and one's a single. One's a single and one's a double. In other words, it's seventy-two by seventy-four.
Right.
Okay? And then the other one would be, uh, let me tell you how much, it would be a sixty by ninety-six.
Hang on one sec, give me one second. For a thirty-seven by sixty-three?
Thirty-seven? No, I didn't say by thirty-seven. I said seventy-four by seventy-four.
Well, that's two. That would be two.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay. It's, I'm gonna tell you that it's going to be about, for two of them, about seven hundred dollars. Seven hu- seventeen hundred dollars.
Seventeen hundred dollars for like a double window?
For the dog.
Double window, seventeen, okay. And the single window? And the single window would be half of that price?
Right. About eight, yeah, about eight fifty.
Okay.
Again, I'm just estimating.
Okay, so that's twenty-five hundred dollars right there for three windows.
Say that again?
That would be twenty-five hundred dollars?
For three, oh, for three single units, yeah.
Okay.
Somebody else, somebody else asked over here?
Seventy-two by ninety-four. The patio door, the patio door.
Sliding glass.
Seventy-two by ninety-six. That's the one that's seventy-two by ninety-six.
But that's to take out and replace, included.
So, for sixty by ninety-six, we're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars.
And how about the seventy-two by ninety-six?
That's eight hun- that's, uh...
Seventy-two by ninety-six, about twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Does that include installation?
Includes installation, includes permits, includes everything. Subtennis is not an extra charge.
Okay, there's twenty-five to fifty people, how much of a discount? Twenty-five percent?
That.
Twenty-five percent? God, really?
Hey, I'm Jewish, I, you know, I can't help it.
So am I, how did that happen? We're all related, aren't we? As far as additional discount, right now, I'm looking at eight-hundred-and-twenty-four units, just so you know. It's a lot, and it's a very long project.
Well, there's a number of people here who have already packed.
Okay, alright. But as far as doing fifty, again, my boss handles that. There would be an additional discount, for sure.
Well, they'll send out the blurbs.
I only have a sliding glass door.
Whatever, whatever it is, that's what, that's the part that you would be paying. There would be a separate, there would be a bit of a permit fee in there.
We have another question? Um, just, I just, I'm not too bothered.
What's the name of your company once again?
Florida, Florida Window and Door.
Would it be possible for you to prepare a sheet that we could see and look at with these prices? It's kinda abstract when somebody gives you dimensions and you draw out a figure.
As far, as far as giving you a price per item, it's very difficult. Do it as a package, so you know that.
Well, if you could, or no, my, what kind of package?
So...
Do you do it as a package?
In other words, the way I price stuff, I don't know if you guys got the sheets?
No.
No.
Okay. What I do is, I measure every window, I have the list of every window in each apartment. I put it, I put it together, I put in, I put in the discounts. And that's how, that's how it work. Now, if everything gets summed up on a, on a spreadsheet.
Okay.
But, but it's a spreadsheet that just gives you, it's a spreadsheet that just basically gives you numbers for product, the amount of discount, the permitting fees, and the disposal fee. The disposal fee is always the same, so it's really minimal for these projects.
Is it enough information to make a fine decision?
Refinish, please. Uh, you said you had these sheets?
No, I gave it to everybody. I'll give it to the board.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me.
Are they able to kinda work that? Show them?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they were to work it, sure.
Yeah, he won't, he has everything.
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna know, the new foot in this impact lab, does that include the new frame?
Everything is, the whole, it comes as a unit.
What about the tracks?
The what?
The tracks?
Tracks is, that's part of the unit.
Everything gets...
Everything, everything that you need to have us, fix in an opening, you will have.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you a silly question. What about the wood? What about the wood if it's, if it's rotted?
We replaced all the wood parts.
An extra cost?
No, that's part of the project.
That's part?
Yes.
Part of the project.
Hey, we're a top-tier company, we do it right. We only wanna do it once.
It's just, it's difficult because we don't have a price list.
We're gonna have to move on to the next item soon, so I'll, 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 well, you already asked your question that week, right?
What kind of guarantee that we will come with?
They come, there's three products. One is a ten-year warranty, one is a twenty-five-year warranty that also has a little bit of energy saving. Then there's a lifetime, one that has gas in the middle, it's two panes with gas. That, so there's three different warranties.
And you pay extra for those warranties?
Nothing is extra. Everything that, every price I give you is a total price.
Is there a discount on insurance, on our home loan insurance?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, it could be up to, it could be as much as forty percent.
Alright, anyway, we have to move on. Uh, Dan, do we need to discuss the Grenoble entrance windows with forty leaves or anything like that? Or can we move on?
We'll get the copies and we'll see what they look like.
Dan?
John, it would be nice if you say goodbye, Frank.
Wait, just a minute. Uh, thank you for coming and I appreciate, I was, I was asking Dan if we needed to discuss the Grenoble windows with you, because I believe that, I had a nice item on the agenda that was also your company. So that's what I was asking. Do we need Grenoble, the Grenoble win-
Those side windows.
The architectural.
Right. Well, that, that was just a, there's three, there was three different... You see three prices, the first three prices to the left of the column?
I only gave you one price.
Okay, so that's the one you decide, that's a ten-year warranty on that one.
Yeah.
Is that impact or what kind of glass?
No, that's regular glass.
It is impact, it is?
No, not by the wind, not, he took regular glass by those.
No, no, I gave you, I talked about clear glass. And it, but it is, it is impact.
Okay.
It's Hurricane Five. Hurricane Six, you don't have to worry.
That, that's what, um, I was asking Dan, because the next item on the agenda is Grenoble entrance windows. Uh, and my question was, does that have to be impact windows? Because if so, then, and we do it in the Grenoble, that, we're talking about the entrance windows now. Uh, then, wouldn't we have to do it all built?
No, because these windows need to be replaced. The frame is totally rotted out. It's not, you're not doing it like renovation. You're doing it because the windows are gonna fall out.
Is that a code requirement that they're, they have to be replaced by the impact windows?
Anytime you replace windows.
Okay, that's true. Alright. So... Um, okay, well, thank you for coming.
Just one last thing, again. Company is most important. You could, we have, last year we did thirty-two hundred jobs. You can have the best window in the world, if it's not put in right, you have, you have nothing. Just leave you with that one point. Thank you.
Okay. You too, thank you. Okay, uh, on this issue of the hurricane impact windows, not, I mean, for, um, the bulk rate and so forth. Dan, can you kinda tell us what you would recommend that we do with that? Um, before the board, uh, votes? Well, before that, but we, first we'd have to decide what company to go with. And then, and, you know, we, because we won't be able to get as big of a group discount if we go with...
We can see the price from this company. It's hard to tell.
It's, it's very hard to...
I mean, if you're gonna do anything, just send it around to the office. Okay, you know, which ones are gonna pay for this? And, and which ones are gonna pay for this? That's right, it's not doing this. You know, I think that you should let the people, you should send that around to all the...
But this is the problem. But this is the prob, this is the problem. Tony, this is the problem with that. If we have three different companies, and you have twenty people going with this company, another twenty with this company, like, then you're, you're diminishing your own discount.
No, what we can do, what you can do is present all three and we vote.
John, this is the biggest hocus pocus I ever signed my whole life.
Right.
You should measure one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, show them what windows there are, what doors there are, and let them bid on each one of those units, and then tell people how much it's gonna cost. These guys, they're all hocus pocus, they're just, they're just trying to get a contract and telling anybody all kinds of, five thousand for a one-bedroom, are you kidding me? That's ridiculous, it's a joke. They're trying to rape you. Put it out for tender. Don't have these monkeys come in here and try to hocus pocus people that don't know the first thing about a window or a door. Put it out for tender. Say, this is what we are interested in, give us a price. We don't know how many, but we'll have so many units that's gonna buy, and you're gonna have to give us a deal depending on how many we get.
Thanks, thank you for that suggestion, that's very good, thank you.
This guy was telling, this guy was telling you that he's, he's a good guy, how do you know who he is?
Okay, anyway, um, we, we, okay, we're losing order here, okay. The next item, okay, I, I think we should just table Lewis for now, because we, we don't have enough information.
Will we get, I mean, will the sheet that you said Dan had, would we have access to if we go to the office?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
John, one more thing, why don't you take advice of what John just said? And send around a word saying if anybody is interested in impact windows, let us know and we'll, you know, we can let you know what's going on. Therefore, anybody that's in, that's interested.
We can also have a, some kind of signup sheet at the office where people can... So, Dan, could you set that up, and then, once we have enough people showing interest, then we can move from there. But anyway. Um, let's just table, can we, can we table this for now?
Yes.
Lewis, move to table, I'll second it.
And John, I gotta pay. And Marat, are you gonna pay for my windows? Well, then we gotta table it. Ain't nobody wanna pay for my windows, you want my windows?
Okay, uh, that's table now, the Grenoble entrance windows. Dan, Dan, what do we have to do here? Just tell us, tell us what we have to do on Grenoble.
Okay, that is just for you guys to decide whether you wanna spend that money, that was the same company that was just here, or do you want me to continue looking to somebody?
What is, what are we talking about, how much?
Four thousand sixty dollars to replace the two, the windows on either side. There's fifteen small windows on either, so it's a total of thirty, uh...
Thirty little panes.
Thirty panes?
Yes, it's, you have a group here with an arch on the top, door, and on the other side, you have the repeat, repeat of the, uh, so they have to replace both. The wood frames are totally rotted out or eaten by termites or something.
So the total price would be?
Four thousand sixty dollars.
Is that the best price of Grenoble?
Uh, George, does that sound like a good price or?
Yeah, what they're gonna put is aluminum, it's no more wood.
Right.
Okay, that's it. It's aluminum, no more wood.
And we have to do it because the, uh, the wood, the wood is rotted?
We have all the wood that's like, and then now we gotta take it out.
Uh, Grenobles? This is for the lobby, the lobby windows.
I have one estimate, I've been trying since last April to get companies that would do this job. Every time I show them it's just these two windows, they say, oh, you gotta guarantee it's at least two more buildings. I said, I don't have two more buildings.
Okay, um, I don't see the proposal for this particular thing, but, uh, can you give us the exact price?
What does, four thousand?
Four thousand sixty. Um, is there a motion to approve this? For the window and door, forty-six, forty-sixty?
Isn't that the guy that was just here?
Yeah, that was the guy that was just here.
I can keep looking. I've been trying since April, but I can keep looking.
No, I mean, you know what? I know that, uh, what's his name, Robert, uh, Rabbit is in that building. And that is horrible, he said. And he's been asking this since last year, since last year.
Since April, since, since April.
Little bit before, whatever. Can we get this done?
Let's, okay, can we get a motion for this?
Is anybody awake?
Carl, would you like to make a motion?
I'm not making a motion, no. Would you like to move?
Uh, do you think Doug is on the board?
I made a motion that you can't...
You can't make a motion.
Let's pay it.
Carl, would you like to move this? I don't wanna move it.
Oh, Rabbit's gonna be really happy.
No, I don't wanna move it because I don't wanna move everything. I'd like other people to move it.
Can you ask Doug? Well...
That was in the package that was sent to you guys on Friday.
But then, uh, Morgan's not aware that he's our maintenance guy.
George knows about it. George, you know about the...
We have so many companies coming, I'm, I'm at the peak of somebody else, they don't wanna do it, nobody.
I mean, okay.
And what we're doing now is one forever, it's aluminum, it's no more wood.
Okay, so let's get this over with.
And I'll have to do it next year again, but the wood, it's finished, put another. Aluminum is on finish.
Alright.
What's the size of the window? What's the size of the window?
There are fifteen small panes per window. It's not a single window. It has individual panes.
It's like this, like this.
No, well, you see the top of that window, figure that fifteen, like fifteen times.
You said this price is okay?
Yeah, it's okay for aluminum. Nobody wanna do it anymore.
Is it gonna be a...
Is it good, is it a good proposal? Okay.
Is it aluminum or wood?
It's aluminum.
Then that's... So you only got wood.
Um, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve this. Lewis made the motion, um, I'll second it. Is there any note? Is there a no vote? Hearing none, it's approved. That's for Grenoble. Alright, um, next item, Dan, what's?
Number eight. Pest Control.
Uh, this is for the pest control. Uh, Orange Pest Control was supposed to be here, they did not show up. And, uh, also, Orkin did not show up. Uh, we have just the one company.
Yeah, Maxwell showed up either. That Maxwell was here.
Dan, why are we getting rid of the pest control company?
Because every time I call them, there's a problem. We're, uh, two of the buildings, uh, the Grenoble, and now we're starting to hear in the, uh, Orleans, are having a problem with rats. George has told me that when the guy comes around, it's supposed to refit the, uh, the stations for the rats, that he goes back and he checks, and he says you can tell they haven't even been touched. Uh, they come and they spray for the, um, roaches and whatnot. They come week after week after week, people are still complaining about it. They, we were gonna get rid of them six months ago, and we said we'd give them another chance, and things have not improved one iota.
Dan, do you know how people take care of their garbage?
I understand that.
Do you know how people take care of their garbage?
I understand that.
That's why we have rats and that's why we have roaches. They throw things down, the trap, uh, the chute, they throw things down, everything.
I understand that.
In my building, I take care of those chutes and I clean it out.
I understand that. Would you like, would you like me to put somebody in each building to watch?
We, we, we have, Dan, we have a presentation, let's do that first? Okay.
Pest Logic?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jay, good evening, everybody. My name is Ty Terrell, I'm the owner and CEO of Pest Logic. Um, we've been in business for forty-one years, I've owned it for the last fifteen years. Um, we're the official pest control company for the Miami Dolphins, uh, for the Florida Panthers. Yes, boy, that's taking me right off the stage real quick. So, there we are. We're very involved in our community, we're a full-service pest control company. Um, everything from general household pest control, rodents, wildlife, bees, termites, um, lawn fertilization, lawn diseases, anything and everything that has to do with pest control, uh, we're a full-service company. Um, I was invited here tonight to, um, I made a proposal for the community, I did walk the community, I met with the property manager to understand what some of the complaints are, um, and I provided a proposal, um, and I was invited here tonight to answer any questions that anybody might have.
How long have you been in business?
Forty-one, forty-one years total, fifteen years I've owned it.
And you're, um, I'm sorry, what is the name again?
Pest Logic.
Pest Logic?
Yes.
You're based in, uh, Deerfield Beach?
Deerfield Beach, correct. What was your name again? Ty Terrell. Ty? Yes.
Let me ask you one question, sir. You wanna start with the business, what is your plan for, we have problems, you mentioned the problems, alright?
Yes, yes.
What is your plan for helping us to disappear, not disappear, to all these...
Troll.
What, what is your plan, what is your plan for the year in case? Do you have any plan you can tell us now?
For the year of pest control in the community.
Yes.
Well, first and foremost, and one of the two biggest problems I was told of, um, was germin roaches and, uh, the rodents. Uh, and I just wanna quickly speak to the rodents real quick. I walked around each of the buildings to look at the rodent bait stations. It's, it's respectfully a joke. Um, half the stations are, have product control tags on them, half the stations were buried. Uh, there weren't enough stations, uh, they haven't been changed and cleaned, so I don't know that you've really been truly getting, uh, rodent control service.
Probably you find empty, alright?
Everyone that I saw was empty, that's true.
That's the proof we don't like the company we have now. And not doing the job.
Certainly not to talk about, about any other company, but I do know, being in the business so long, when you have different types of rodent bait stations like that, there's only one key that fits these bait stations. So unless you have a key for every different style of bait station out there, some of those bait stations are not even being open. Not to mention that on the bait station itself, it should always be tagged. When was the last time service was put, what was put in there, and the date of that service. Uh, I saw no tags at all on any of the bait stations.
And whose responsibility is that to keep up with that?
Your current vendor, your current pest control company.
Their company.
Yes.
But who's supposed to act for them to make sure that they're doing it?
Exactly.
Somebody's gotta look after it to make sure it's gonna...
We're looking as long, we, that Danny is the person, he has many chances for coming.
That's the job.
They told me, we coming ready, we not finding.
And, and that's the purpose of having your tags on the outside of the bait station, so that anybody can walk by and see the last time it was serviced and what was put in it. None of those have tags, none of the stations have tags. But in the proposal, um, we also, the industry does the rodent bait stations, but in January of this year, uh, there is a new product that came out, they got a patent on it, it's an all-organic natural rodent repellent. So, the bait boxes that we've all been using in the industry for years and years and years, draws the rodents into the bait box, they eat the bait, and then twelve to thirty-six hours later, it's a stomach poison, and they go die wherever they're at, they'll die, whether it's in the building, whether it's on the road, wherever it may be. Well, this new repellent now repels the rodents away from the buildings. It doesn't kill them, it repels them away. So I will tell you, we've had phenomenal success with this. The greatest, uh, success story with that is, uh, Dolphin Stadium. Uh, they had, as you know, they've been doing a lot of repairs in the stadium, and we, when they broke down a lot of the suites, generations upon generations upon generations of rats were in there. Um, we tried everything from putting thousands of traps down to bait boxes, we have hundreds and hundreds of bait boxes there. Once we put that repellent in, not another problem with those, those rats. And everything I'm telling you has to get verified by the director of maintenance at the Dolphins.
So, you have it behind the building, you have this, the, the base behind the building. Where do the rats go then? Where do the rats go?
Okay, when you say, say this is one of your buildings, we put it all around this building.
All around the building.
Because rats, when they do, they'll always go up against something, their whiskers will always be touching something. So, you put it up around the building, where they go, I don't know, and you don't care as long as they're not coming to your building. But it repels them away from the building itself.
But they go around the trees too?
Sure, and this is a prime property for the trees and the water and everything else that you have. It's a perfect habitat for rodents. Um, so the, the product is also for wildlife, um, and I understand that some, in trash areas, so we have raccoons and, and possums and...
We have ducks.
Ducks and other, it's, it's good for all of it.
It'll kill the ducks?
No, it doesn't kill anything. No, that's, that's one thing is, no, this doesn't kill anything, it doesn't kill ducks, yes.
It just keeps them away.
Rodents, okay.
But before we go, before we get to any more audience questions, I'd like you to kinda give us, uh, overall synopsis of your pricing, uh, how often you come out, do you do all the units every three months, every, that kinda thing?
Okay. As it relates to the rodent control, correct?